All right, we're going to call it the order. The November 18th Planning Board meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I'll go ahead and introduce the board members. To my left, we have Jerry Graybill. I'm Allison Hurley. I'm the acting chair for tonight. We have Amber Fecto, Phil Roy. On Zoom, we have Paul Ametucci.
I can't hear you guys.
It says they're muted.
Somebody on the air, there you go.
Perfect, okay.
There it goes.
All right. So on Zoom, we have Paul Ametucci, Lee J. Feldman. We have Tammy Bellman, our new Director of Planning.
Assistant.
Assistant Director of Planning, perfect.
I have to mute myself.
And Jenny McCabe. All right, so we're going to begin with the public comment. Anything? Anybody want to come to the podium? Yeah, we don't.
I would explain what a public comment is because there might be somebody here that might want to speak.
Okay, so it's just a chance for the public to have questions brought up. We won't answer any of your questions from the board. We have them written down, and then during next week's meeting, we would address them in Old Business. Does anyone have anything they want to come up and bring to the board?
This is the planning board meeting?
It is.
Are we allowed to be in here?
Yeah. So we were just saying that this is the public comments portion of the night. So if you have anything you want to bring to the Planning Board that we can deliberate for the next week and bring up during Old Business next week, now is your time to shine. All right, moving on. We have the approval of minutes for November 4th, 2021. I wasn't at this meeting, so can I even ask for approval?
You can abstain.
Yeah, I'm going to have to abstain from this, but did anyone find any issues with the minutes from last week?
I didn't know.
No.
No.
They look fine.
Yep.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you, all right.
Roll call vote.
All right, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Paul, I hear an "I" from you.
Yes.
Phil.
I approve.
Amber.
Hi.
Jerry, thank you. All right, those are approved. All right, moving on to the public hearings. So the first thing we're going to talk about is the preliminary major plan for the major subdivision Phase 4 of Heritage Drive. So Steve Clement. Thank you. Just make sure you're talking to the mic, and if you want to pick it up and walk around, you can do that, too.
Right, any questions for me on, you on anything? Right now, where we're at is stormwater has been turned in with the concerns we had a few weeks ago and answered by the DEP. So that's all to the overseer of the file of the project, and it looks like she might be reviewing that tomorrow. So we should be all ready for DEP driving.
Okay, so if that was the only outstanding item from last week, then we can go forward with application completedness. Does anyone want to make a motion for that?
Do we have to wait for the DEP report?
We have to wait until both public hearings are done and then bring it up in Old Business.
All righty. So does anyone have any questions for the applicant on the board?
No.
Nice to see you tonight, all right. Moving on to the site plan expansion on 565 Portland Street for the Route 4 self-storage. And we went to a site walk of that tonight. We got to take a little tour and see what was going on there. So you do have the expert here on Zoom. Oh, you're on.
Neil Reposen, the consultant representing Tanner Hergit, the expansion of Route 4 self-storage. The plan has not been, hasn't been modified since we came in previously with the application initially. And as you said, we went out for the site walk today. I just kind of showed the land where that, where the initial building is going to be, close to the route there. Would you like me to pull up the plan, or do you just want to get that brief intro and the public comment come?
Okay, yeah. Do you want to pull up the plan, or maybe?
Unless, does anybody in the audience need to see it?
I've seen the plan, but I would like to ask a few questions.
You think?
Go up to the podium, yep.
Cheryl Dione, we own the Abudding property on Fort Coffin Lane. I have a question as to why they're using the private road to access this piece when it's all one big parcel and they have access off Route 4. There's been no notice to this, and I understand you have to give easement and access along a private road to any property that can't get their utilities or access in any other manner. But they can, they have access off of Route 4. And who's going to maintain this once they start using this road, or if they were to use this road? Who's going to do any upkeep? And does the town require any kind of building of that road beyond what it is, up to the current town standards, now that they're expanding business using that area?
Is it going to be me answering that, Neil, or you?
I didn't know if you just took all the comments in and then addressed them later on, or are you going to answer, do us answer questions during the public comment portion?
So usually it would be addressed during Old Business, yeah. So, but we can take down your question. It's definitely noted, and we did discuss that during the site walk, too, a little bit, but we'll get you the answers to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Here, I think Mr. Briggs was here for the phase, on Zoom, for the Phase 4. I don't know if we're going to give a chance for folks to do one last chance for the Phase 4 public hearing and then you can close the vote. Now, T. Briggs over there on Zoom, he had some comments for the Phase 4 project.
Oh, yeah.
I've been in to see, good evening, I've been to see Tammy this week and just noted that in Phase 3, there's a cul-de-sac off of Cedar Barrel Lane, and the plan does not represent that as a hammerhead, which is actually what is on Cedar Barrel Lane. So I didn't know if it was appropriate at this time, since there is a Phase 4, that that should be redrawn.
All right, we're talking about heritage, the clements project?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that will be addressed in Old Business as well.
So we have Phase 3.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to close out the public hearings and move on to Old Business unless there's anything else from anyone. All right, so we're going to go over the preliminary plan of the major subdivision Phase 4 of Heritage. And we're just looking for, so we can't do application completedness tonight for that?
So, the application is complete, so right now, this is approval of the preliminary plan. So there is the one question of the applicant for the switch from the hammerhead to the, from the cul-de-sac that's drawn in the plan to hammerhead. You can let the applicant speak on that.
Okay.
I know our planner has some comments on the plan as well, but before Mr. Clement speaks, I gave an opportunity for the planner to speak, she has some comments, and then Steve can.
Perfect.
Rest those comments.
Yeah, all right. I have provided the board with copy subjects, and I want to give it to you as it comes also. Both Lee J. and I looked at the plans. Oh, sorry. Not used the videos here. Both Lee J. and I looked at the plans for Phase 4 of Heritage, and Lee J.'s finding is on the email that came in today that I just gave also to Mr. Clement. It says, "I took a closer look at the plan set, and the only concern I have is they should indicate on the plan that the wetlands located on the lot should be signed as no cut areas so that future lot owners do not think they can go in and cut the vegetation in these areas. I did not see anything that would suggest that was the case. You may want to condition him on that." And then, when I was reviewing it, I like detail, so I found a few things that I have a concern over. The first one is updating the survey that's dated April 21st for the hammerhead on Cedar Mill, Cedar Barrel Lane. That would be one of the key things that would need to be done. The next thing is, question 22 is not answered, and it affects 22 and 23 on their application. They did not answer it, and I know he's trying for Phase N, Phase 4. So we need to know how many lots are coming with Phase A, Phase B, and Phase C. The Army Corps of Engineers Authorization Letter, it should be signed prior to the final or the start of construction, and you would need a copy of that for the file to make sure that we get it in a timely manner. There should be a note on the survey regarding the special condition that the Army Corps of Engineers found when they went out and did their inspection regarding the tree cutting dates to minimize the impacts to the federally listed northern long-eared bat. If we don't put that on that, animal lovers everywhere are going to be all over you. Number 4 should also be placed on the survey in the general notes section from the Army Corps of Engineers. The compliance certification form, a return signed copy to the town within 90 days of completion. General permit work start notification form, return a signed copy to the town within 30 days of the start. This way, this way Jen knows that it has started and everything's going on with it. The soils report, there's a note, I have all kinds of copies of those. There's a note with the alteration of wetlands may require a permit from main DEP. One has been applied for, and what is the status of it? This information was provided by Mr. Clement tonight, that they are possibly reviewing it come tomorrow. So that one is pretty much off the list. Would it be possible to establish drainage easements? I know you're putting in subfilters to assist with the wetlands that's going to be filled in, but if you put in a drainage easement, there's 25 feet, actually 50 feet, 25 on each lot, side by side, where you could take 12 and 1/2 feet off each side and put in a nice easement, so you could take and do some drainage easement right there. And if you take it along DEP's website, it'll actually give you the types of grasses that would be best to enable a better drainage area for that. And that way, you'd also eliminate a lot of possible wet basements up there, which that would make your homeowners very happy. And the HOA, now, I've never done an HOA before. I've never, you know, sat down and proved one or anything, but if you go to Section 3, the Road Maintenance Agreement, the second paragraph, you have, it says, starts off with the however. And then it goes, "The lot owners who purchase lots agree to pay a yearly fee of $150 to the developer on the first of every month for his maintenance and upkeep of the roads." "Yearly" and "every month" are kind of confusing. I didn't know if you wanted to, that's just kind of a personal thing, I'm not sure if you wanted $150 a year.
They don't pay me, they pay an association, it's a charity, it's people, other than that, no one pays me.
Right, but it, well, it says developer in the HOA, but I didn't know if it was a yearly fee of just $150, because then it says it's due on the first of the month.
There's a new covenant's all drafted for Phase 4.
Well, I thought.
There's been modifications to things, changes and increases.
Okay, if you want, if you could just email me over.
Do you want me to answer these after I appear? Because I got some questions myself.
Did you actually come to the podium anyway, because Bobby can't hear you?
Okay. I'll let you continue.
Okay, there's just a couple more. Once the HOA is signed and recorded, you know, at the Registry of Deeds, we'd need one for the file here, because that wouldn't come through the registry when we get our deeds every month. And the main DEP forested buffer, no disturbance declaration of restrictions, that should be under the general notes and an approved signed copy to the town also. That's something that, if main DEP is going to require that, if you have it on your notes, on your survey, anybody you have come in to do contracting work in there will know that they can't disturb that. And then, the stormwater operation and maintenance program, the gentleman that you had do your report for you on stormwater, you might want to take and also refer to the Town of Berwick's land use ordinance, Section 7.2 for conformance. That was something that was, that Berwick has not complied with. And those, like I said, those, that was my first review on it, so.
Right, so a lot of these concerns you have, this is all going to come in the DEP package, and the buffer, everything's going to be marked.
Okay.
There is, there is maintenance, it's done through the association. The filter ponds are abutted through the road easement, so there's no requirement for access because you're stepping off the easement into the pond.
Okay.
And typically, everything we've done in the past has had 25-foot setbacks or range ranges, that's all in every deed and recorded. Like I said, all the DEP stuff, all this stuff has been handled in the past and will continue doing the same thing. The association has been ongoing since day 1, which is 22 years ago. The Army Corps letter is not signed yet because I'm waiting for the permit so we can have a start date. So I've been in touch with them as it is.
Well, it sounds like you've got, this punctual is pretty much taken care of.
Right, my biggest concern was number 1. I'm not sure what the fix means, the cul-de-sac and Cedar Barrel Lane.
On you, if you look on your survey?
Right.
It still has the cul-de-sac on Cedar Barrel Lane as opposed to the hammerhead. That was approved.
The hammerhead is, is inside the cul-de-sac, and that cul-de-sac is furnished to the three lots on Cedar Barrel. That can't be changed. That's all heated, built out. That's been done for quite some time. And then, another note is Phase 1 and 2 were turned over in '07 to the Town of Berwick, which we still maintain with the association. Phase 3 with Cedar Barrels and Elmwood is still private. I still own that. But we have, we've always had an ongoing association that takes care of everything in there.
Yeah, but it was just the wording on it.
Right, right.
To go from yearly.
Right.
Because somebody looking at it could say, oh, it's only $150 a year and.
And then the, okay, the bat one. The agreement I made with the state is, is not to remove wood in those months of the restriction when, when getting on with the bats. I don't have the exact months, I want to say it's.
June and July.
Yeah, I was going to say, at first, it was like April to October, and it's like, we haven't met, that's, that'll be right. So that, all this stuff will be in the DEP, your concerns are going to be pretty much all.
Addressed in the DEP.
To the DEP. And over time, we've modified the association, I mean, the covenants, and we just kind of tuned it in for more protection to the development and to the owners and to us personally. And sometimes it's concerns with people that come in, and then once they find out, it also protects them. Most everybody's on the same page. I do all the excavation in the project. DEP is aware of that, I've done it 22 years in there, so there's nobody in there that should be doing anything except me, which makes it pretty simple with DEP when there's only dealing with one contractor.
Right.
As for wood cutting, it can happen pretty easy. Some people just, in a day or two, know that that can happen. Crane shows up and, you know, but we have pretty good guys, and most everybody is on the same page with all this. The issue you have is when a house is sold and then something happens real quick, they're tuned into the covenants and what's going on in the project.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much it. So this will all be addressed with.
To the DEP.
The package, and we will get you all the rest of the information and sign. So is there any other questions with that?
Did you see Lee J.? This was on the email. That was the first one I read for it. I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment on that.
On the email?
Yeah, the very top.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing I'm suggesting there is that whether it's through deed restrictions or deed restriction, and in some cases I've seen where we're starting to see signage go up on trees, along wooden buffer areas and whatnot. Where the wet, where the wetlands are located on some of those lots, that those wetlands be noted as a no-cut area so that future landowners don't go in.
Right.
And cut, cut trees, not you.
No, no, we, that was one of the concerns, Lee J., that was answered this past week. We've, we've done that in the past, the trick is, is keeping the signs up over years.
Right, right.
Most people that are there are aware of that, if they're in a butter. So everything, as we start this project in the three phases we're going to build it, as we do that, everything will be marked before it's conveyed. So that was addressed with the engineers and the DEP engineer also for the file, that they'll be marked.
Then all I would suggest, Steve, is part of your final plan is that we put a note, you put a note on the plan that indicates that those areas are no cut, no cut zones?
Right, yeah, because we have both timber and vegetation, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, not for me.
All right, thank you.
Did they answer her question?
Different group. All right.
After the.
Preliminary plan.
Yeah, yeah, approval of it.
Okay, all right, so it looks like all of these are going to be addressed in the final plan, but for the preliminary plan, we can go ahead and approve that that is complete. Anyone want to make a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Perfect, all right. So preliminary plan on Phase 4 of Heritage Drive is complete, thank you. Oh, right, roll call, sorry. So, roll call, go ahead, Jerry.
Yes.
All right, I also want your vote.
Emma, yes.
Yes.
And Paul?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, I'm a little rusty, I missed last week's. All right, so next up, we have the site plan expansion for the Route 4 self-storage again. So we're just looking for application completedness today for that, right? Or is it preliminary plan again?
Yeah, you just got, so you have the, I think the point of, it sounds like everything except for the road is straightforward.
Yeah.
At that point, I think between, I think Neil probably should take it on and address, and the board might want to consider a condition or, but I think, let's see what Neil says about the Coffin Road.
So just to let you know, that was my first question at the site plan today. Neil will tell you more about it, but I do see going forward how it could be a problem, so keep that on your radar.
May, may I?
I think we're, was he going to address the question?
Neil.
Neil, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I think our position on that one was with the private road, with the needed access, it is the, you know, the responsibility of, of the user of, of the way to upkeep that maintain, that maintenance. Looking through the, you know, the deeded rights of it, it didn't look like there was ever a real clear-cut maintenance agreement set up for it. So it's kind of, the users of the lot are responsible for it, but the, you know, the mechanism to get there is just to make the road passable. So it's, it's a unique situation where it's kind of an abandoned, abandoned town road. I know Cheryl, the Abutter, they upkeep that, that portion of it there. The landowners up the road help out with the maintenance through there, and Tanner has every intention of, you know, contributing, everything that needs to be contributed to keep that up. This, the use that's being proposed, although, you know, looks fairly expansive out there, it's unique in that it really only has, you know, two, really two weeks, you know, twice a year where there's significant traffic in and out of there, you know, when the campers are going in and then the campers are coming out for beginning of the end of the season. And, you know, the remainder, it's very, it's pretty sparse traffic, you know, onto that, onto Coffin Lane. But that's something that we can definitely look into and try to clear up for the file and make sure, and Tanner will engage with, you know, with all the Abutters to make sure everyone's comfortable with, with it going forward.
And I think that she specifically just asked what prohibited the access from Route 4.
Oh, yeah, and it's, we did explore both, both routes to access it. There's quite a bit of wetlands coming through the center of that lot. Let me pull that up if I can here.
Right, because your original plan was actually to go through the wetlands, right? But before the evaluation?
Correct, yep. Is my screen up there?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we had evaluated a plan to come through the existing, the existing development and bring it through here and through this wetland and, and come through with this, the same crossing at this location, but since there was the opportunity to utilize an existing access through here, in discussions with DEP and Army Corps, they indicated that if you can minimize the impacts as much as possible, that's the way they're going to, they're going to push us, and they, and they want to see, they want to see as much effort as possible put into avoiding wetland impact. So that we, we settled on this as, as the least, the least detrimental environmentally, and it left, it left some usable land undisturbed, but for, for the, for the ability to use an existing access and cause much less disturbance, this was, we felt like this was the way to go with it.
But it's still not impossible.
So they haven't prohibited you from doing it? It's not against current land use ordinance or any regulations with the DEP or Army?
Or to prevent us from doing?
Going through the wetlands, is it protected wetlands, or just they're hoping that you wouldn't?
No, it's, it's not protected wetlands, it's just, if we, if we fill this portion of it in to come across, it'll, it would kick us into a Tier 1 where we'd, where we'd get some review from, from Army Corps, and they indicated if there's a way to get away from doing that, that's what they'd want to see. It's not necessarily that it would be, it would be rejected, but they certainly want, they, they look for the alternate, alternate analysis to try and see if there's avoidance and minimization that you can do for the wetland impact, and if we show them something like this where we could get away from it, then this is generally what they, what they push us to and what they wants, what they want to see. So this is just what I came in with for.
So you're saying the landowner would be like more willing to, you know, talk about maintenance on the road that you guys are going with than disrupt the environment?
Correct, yep, and that's, and also that it's, if he ended up building, you know, a roadway out here to get out back here, he'd still be doing quite a bit of maintenance on that as well, so he's, he's, you know, completely prepared to help out So he's, he's, you know, completely prepared to, to help out and, you know, perform the upkeep as necessary to keep this, at least his use, you know, up and running. He doesn't want this, he doesn't want this road to be, you know, to fall into disrepair. That's, that's not his intention.
Okay, Phil, you said you had another question?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I mean, it's clear that the road is, it makes the most sense for, for your proposal, but, you know, in the, in the interest of being neighborly and, you know, with the current abutters, would you ever consider entering into a memorandum of agreement with them for road maintenance? The only reason I ask that, it's not direction, it's just a question, is, you know, as a storage unit for heavy RVs and heavy boats and whatnot, you know, the potential for that road to get beat up is, is pretty high. You know, in the interest of, how much money are you going to save by not having to go across the wetlands? Would you guys consider entering into a memorandum of agreement with the abutters?
I think that's, that's something that we can, we definitely explore with, with the applicant. I don't think, I guess, I don't think he's, he's opposed to, you know, having any kind of agreements for, for maintenance out here. It's, it's something that he's definitely willing to look at. We just hadn't, we hadn't had, you know, anything trigger it for as far as what's required by the access and the deeded, the deeded rights in there. Yeah, I'll definitely bring that up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Lee Jay?
Yep, thank you. Um, so I, a couple of things. Neil, on your survey that I have, it talks about a 25-foot right-of-way benefiting Lot C. Can you point out Lot C? I mean, so it seems as though based on the research you've done, there is an easement that exists for some sort of access somewhere, but I thought you ought to point out where Lot C is. The other thing I'd point out is ironically, I'm doing an expansion of a self-storage facility up in Waterboro, not by Neil and his group and not by this developer, totally separate. And up there, we had them, at the fire department's request, actually come in with a, an access road just about like this to access some back storage units that are being added in because the existing storage units up front don't really allow for the maneuvering of emergency vehicles to get up back very easily. So if there's a way to make this work, it makes complete sense for that to happen so that they're not trying to weave any emergency vehicles in and around and through storage facilities that are already constructed.
Yep. All right.
I agree, Neil, that's, that's one of the things we were trying to, trying to accomplish with that, you know, the larger turnaround, it's kind of at the front, the front entrance of this up on, up on Randall Road here. And I'm trying to remember how this got broken up between C and the B. This has been several different, several different subdivisions through the years through here. And the, the original subdivision was three, you know, three longer lots, similar to what's presented here for, for the neighboring lot. And those had, those had access easements to get to the back of those lots from Randall Road due to the fact that there was so much wetland in here that was left in there as, as, as a partial right-of-way that gave, that gave those, gave those landowners access through there off of Randall Road as long as they had that, you know, official frontage on Route 4. Because as you've seen out there, that the road is not approved to the point where we can get frontage on, on Randall Road.
So it might be helpful, Neil, if this doesn't get final approval tonight, that if your survey folks can do a little bit more research and give us a history of what Lot C exists of, that, that might take care of some of that issue because there is a 25-foot easement there.
Yep, and then this, that's one of the, one of the, you know, stranger things about about the access road there is that there exists, there exists a, a right-of-way that comes through that follows the old, the old Randall Road right-of-way. Now, this is referred to as Coffin Lane, but this was broken up between that right-of-way that's, that's referenced, referenced in, on our subdivision plan here. And that one, we can, we can pull together all the deed references and everything, so we'll have that to review for, for final on that. That's, that's not a problem. It's really the only, where it gets, where it gets messy is trying to, trying to improve that road and, and see who has a right to improve the road and that portion of it, that's kind of where we, where we got stuck because it wasn't well described when we were trying to get an actual lot back there, it just wasn't feasible.
Right.
But I, yeah, I know that our, our surveyors have done quite a bit of research on this and, and we've had it, we've had it on the books for a long time, so I'm sure they'll be able to get plenty of history on there.
Okay.
I just can't, I just can't remember it offhand here.
Yeah, Neil, I have a question.
Yep.
This is Paul. Just want to know that, you know, we're talking about this road and we saw it tonight when we did the site walk, and it's definitely not in, in fantastic shape now. It's a older road, probably fulfilling the needs of what's there now, but going forward, we're going to have some pretty heavy traffic. Maybe not a lot of traffic, as you say, two weeks in, two weeks out, but we are going to have some pretty heavy traffic on that road. So I would like that analysis to include the weight of, of those vehicles that are going to have to come in and come out. And can, can that road, you know, as, as it's going to be augmented, you know, how well can it handle it and, you know, what's the duration of use and, and that sort of thing? So if that could be put into that, that analysis, I'd like to see that.
Okay, that's, that's something we can, we can put together as, as a general memo just for information and, you know, what kind of, what kind of weights and distribution we're looking through there. I mean, it's, it's a, it's going to be variable, but I think, I think for the most part, we're going to have, you know, the normal recreation vehicle with, with, you know, their, their curb weight as they're going in for, for storage is going to be, is going to be just their unloaded weight. And so they're going to be, they're not going to be, you know, like a fully loaded, going out to go on the trip camper, we're going to have a lesser, lesser impact on the road than those are. But we'll certainly put together something that'll, that'll kind of outline what we're looking to, what we're looking to utilize.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm clearly dying over here. I might need to excuse myself for the meeting, honestly. All right, should I pass this off to Jerry?
Yep.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
Are you okay, Allison?
I think I'm allergic to whatever I was around at the site walk today, honestly, because it started when I was there. I've been coughing ever since. I know. Don't worry, I'm not viral plague today.
The coughing cough.
Yeah. All right, I'll go zoom in.
Okay.
Where I can mute myself.
Okay. I have a question along the same lines for Neil and maybe for you, Jen, because we were there. You brought up about the traffic and all of this, but as Neil said, the buildings removed the part by the fire department to allow access if they ever enclosed them. So the road has to be able to support the fire trucks being able to get back there as well.
Excuse me for removing my mask. I hope everyone's okay with it, real quick. All right, so here's the concern about the road. So if you weren't at the site walk today, and I'm going to look at you guys because it's your road basically that you guys are. So we do have road standards here in Burwick. We do, when you access more than two lots, we do have roads, or two houses, we do have road standards. And those can be found in our land use ordinance. My biggest concern down there is not so much in October, it's really in April and May driving down that road with RVs and other things. I brought that up at the site walk, Neil explained it, but I'm still concerned about those two weeks. So when you drive down that road, it's pretty smooth, there is like, there's ruts and stuff in the road, those will obviously need to be maintained and brought up to our standard. But I do think that we can do a little bit better. I'm not on the planning board. I would suggest that you guys take a look at that and see what you guys can put in for a condition for that. Because I do, I'm the one who's going to field the violation calls and we will get them. So just keep that in mind. Any other question from me and Jerry while I'm already here?
Nope.
Jerry, do I ask a question? Neil, just one observation when we were out there today. If I'm looking at your plan and I understand your plan appropriately, the entrance to the storage facility is going to be before the, the bridge that crosses the stream. Am, am I correct in that assumption?
Right, yep.
My, my concern, and, and I think a concern for the folks down there too, is that that bridge that, that traverses that stream is, is pretty primitive. It looked like a very lightly-covered plastic industrial culvert. And if you have a tenant or, or somebody who's utilizing your business and they miss your turn and they go down there with a heavy load, that's going to create a very significant issue. So I, I think, I, I think there needs to still, and it's not my call, but there should be some discussion as to, does that road need to be further developed? Is there a way you can preclude your customers from going over that bridge? And if you can't, are you willing to invest in that infrastructure to improve it so we can assure that there's not going to be damage to the wetlands and to the river?
Yeah, I'd say my inkling on that one would, would be, the captain would be more than, you know, happy to, to put a, a large sign or, or something that would be very, very obvious to, to prevent, to prevent anyone from going down through there. I know that he, we had discussed whether or not he was going to be keeping clients just at the, at the Route 4 location and then having him pull them back and, and get them set in those units. So I'd have to, I'd have to double-check with him to make sure that he would even be allowing the RVs to, you know, that the clients that bring their, their RVs back there themselves. I'll have to clear that up before I, before I make a final, you know, determination on that one.
My, my. Right, my concern is I've, I've had, you know, absence of thought moments where I've been exceptionally human and gone through a sign. And the people that live at the end of that road, if they can't access their homes because the bridge is out, that, that's going to get ugly really quick. So if we can come up with a plan to address that before it becomes a problem, you know, I, I think it's, people are going to be a lot more amenable to the, the plan and, and a quicker approval for you guys.
Yeah, I know.
Lee Jay has something?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lee Jay.
Sorry, I didn't want to totally interrupt, but I think one way that we can address the issue, Neil, is that get a couple of core borings done and tell us what the compaction rates are out there and comparing to any of the local street standards or gravel road standards that we may have for weight compaction and make sure that, you know, equip, safety equipment and other types of heavy vehicles are able to traverse that road even during the springtime. So maybe just a couple of core borings in your, in that area to tell us what the compaction rates are.
Hey, that's something we can explore out there. Yep. And I, I do, I just want to note again that there, the vehicles that are going to be brought in, they're going to be, you know, domestic vehicles. It's going to be, you know, the RVs and things like that. So it could be something like a vehicle that someone who lives on this road at the end of the road would have. So it's, I, I completely understand the, you know, the concern for it. I don't think that the, that the volume of, of, you know, things that are going to go down that road inadvertently would be, would be that much to, to be concerned about with, with regard to the disrepair of, of the culvert. But I think that's something we can, we can discuss with, with the applicant to make sure we, we get that addressed for all the homeowners in the area.
Should that be a condition or can we make that a condition?
Well, you'd also have the construction vehicles that are going in and out while this is being built. They're going to be heavy and the road maintenance is going to have to be brought back up to the standard that it is now or better, like we've talked about on other projects as well.
And I think that's.
I would think that, I would think that that might be a condition you want to hold in your back pocket until we're ready to actually get this thing approved. But I think that some of that is going to be based on, again, whatever the compaction rates are and if they have to bring it up to a certain standard for us prior to opening that location up.
In addition to that, would you guys be willing to have an engineer evaluate that bridge and culvert? It, it's inadvertent that somebody is going to miss that turn and go over that with a fifth-wheel RV or a boat. And I'm not an engineer, but just looking at it, I, I would not pull my RV over that bridge. And I just, I feel for the abutters that live on the other side of that bridge. If you guys take it out, they, they're kind of limited on their access. So I, I just think it's something we need to concern and just being a good steward and a good neighbor.
Yeah, Neil, that's, that's absolutely something we can, we can do. We can put together an analysis and, and evaluation of that, of that crossing and the associated, associated material on either side of that, that, that river there. Yep.
Okay. Anything else on 565 Portland Street? Site expansion plan? From the board, public? Okay. We're not, there's no, no approval tonight, right?
Right.
Right, so.
No, I, I recommend that what you do is actually just take an action on it by making a table motion and table it until we're ready to hear it again.
Okay. And we'll table this till, what, the next meeting? When we can discuss.
Can we have that information, Neil, by next meeting?
Yeah, we can have that information. If I, if it comes to the point, I believe we can get all the information except for the core borings, which would probably be, end up being a condition, everything else we can get. Yep.
Okay. Then we'll close old business. We'll now open it up to any new business.
You made a motion to table it? You've got to have a second, no vote?
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay, vote. Aye?
Aye.
Paul? Aye, okay. Four, zero. Okay, do, do business?
This one?
Oh, yep. Preliminary major subdivision, 377 Diamond Hill. Mike on Aaron Sikowski?
377 Diamond Hill?
Yep.
Good evening, Steve Height, Civil Works, representing Mike Sikowski for this. This is a six-lot conventional subdivision on Diamond Hill. It's a 21-acre parcel. We had a sketch plan review with the planning board in September on the 2nd. We had a site walk with the planning board on October the 7th. And we've made a preliminary application for you guys now. So based on the site walk that we had and based on the sketch plan review, the application that you have is, is complete. We've had a review from the, I gotta say it for real. David Gilbury, if I mispronounce it, I'm sorry, and now Lee is here tonight representing him. We did get those comments as well. And essentially, it's, it's a conventional lot subdivision, two acres in size and larger. Mr. Sikowski is going to be keeping the last lot, lot number four. And we've also provided the passive open space that we had talked about with the planning board, both the sketch as well as the planning, the site walk, and that shown in the drawing as well. Does this come out?
It does.
Just for clarity, so the, this is the, the open space passive area that we had talked about. We've dedicated that set aside. This whole lot would be Mike's lot, lot number four, and then the additional subdivision lots. There is no wetland impact, there's no wetland buffer impacts. It's coming off the existing driveway, that's, the roadway that's out here now would be an extension of that to a cul-de-sac. And then the drainage associated with that would be mitigated on-site as well with basically type, type of soil filters, both in the, in the cul-de-sac and along the driveways, I'm sorry, along the roadway. And that's really it. We have had test pits done, soil scientists, you have those in there as well. So each of the lots have the appropriate soils for septics. They will have wells on them and the access road would be a paved driveway coming in. We'll upgrade the road at the front end and pave it all the way out through. Mike is not interested in, in doing this right away. If anything else, he's going to, he'll probably put his house on there and wait over the course of time as we talk with the planning board about getting the other lots put together as well, but going through the subdivision now. Mike, nope, David had put together a couple of comments, which I talked to him this afternoon about. And going through the comment list that he had, Lee, would you like me just read through those real quick or would you like to address those first or?
Um, excuse me, well, why don't you go ahead and address those?
Okay, certainly.
I have two additional comments that he did not pick up on, which is fine. That's why we have all kinds of eyes looking at stuff.
Sure.
But why don't you go ahead and go through those comments of his and how he, how you and Lee recommended to address those?
Yep. And I have those responses too, I'll give to the board as well. Actually, let me do that first. So one of the comments from David was about some planning consistencies, about making sure that the open space words and the lot itself was identified on all the plans and the plans, the plan set. They actually are, but would make it more clear on the, on the plans themselves, not a big deal. The HOA documents, making sure it's gonna be a privately owned to maintain road, basically a road maintenance agreement. It, that's not a problem. We would be submitting that for the final anyways. That's standard, not a big deal. His question was relative to the open space and as we had talked with the planning department, I'm sorry, planning board, as well as in the site walk, that would be passive recreation. The entire area is a mowed, mowed field as it is now and would be maintained as such. He was questioning the lot number four, the size of such, and that we had talked about before, you can get more than six lots on this, on this 20 acres, 21 acres. Mike has no intention of doing that. So that remaining parcel is his lot. So that lot will four would be his. The well water, the question was, I think it was relative to the reports that had come up from both the previous one in the eighties and the recent one, the background arsenic levels that are in the, in the soils. There are several houses out there as well and, and from the information we have, those wells are potable as, as they would be here. And from the information that we have from the environmental company that had done all the reports, if there's any concern relative to that, there's very simple ways to mitigate that with well. I'm not quite sure how they do it, but taking care of the well water in the house. Inland fisheries and wildlife, we, we don't meet the thresholds for this going out to inland fisheries, but we do have in your, in your package, we did look at all the information and there are no, none in the area. There's no impacts for, or identified on this lot as well. So we don't have any inland fisheries to, to, to address. And he had asked about the cluster subdivision design. So the answer was no, 'cause he really wanted to have a, a very expansive field to these and make them big lots. And that's, that's what he's gonna have for these. So those were the comments that, that David had and I, and I talked to him about those and that's the responses you have there in front of you now. And Lee, you had, you had additional?
Yep, just two minor comments. I'd like to see on the plans next time, 100 foot radius around the septic system location test pits so that we know that the well locations can fit on those lots and be outside the 100 foot distance, which is required by state law for separation.
Yeah. Yeah. So what, what we typically do there, Lee, is we, we actually show a posed well, well radius on, on the lot.
Right. Right. That's, and I don't see that on this plan set, so that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Let's get that put on there. And the other thing was, depending on where Mr. Sikowski is looking to put his house on lot four, you're showing two building envelopes.
Yes.
And I would suggest that if he's not planning on putting the house on the backside where the parcel is noted with a rock pile area, I would take that building envelope off of there so it's not an insinuation that a second house could go on there.
Yeah, we can do that. That's not a problem. That's a good idea.
Yep. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other comment from the board, public?
I got a comment. Can you, can you? So, um, my name's Tim Perotto. I live at 371 Diamond Hill Road. I'm probably the closest property besides my neighbor Ralph that's abutted to this project. And firstly, I, I, my biggest thing is that I don't really think we need any more subdivisions in Burwick personally as our taxes are already through the roof. Our schools are over capacity. And if I were to pay my house off today, it's not even a big house, it's a three acre spread. You guys all seen here in my backyard. It would cost me $1,000 a month just in taxes. So by allowing all these subdivisions in, we're just gonna make more, more, more taxes. It doesn't make it cheaper. My biggest concern for this project is the arsenic. If you guys look through it, it's been tested, like it's known in Burwick as arsenic acres. So my concern is when people start digging up those foundations in those basements and that soil is left on top of the ground and then it rains, all that arsenic's heading towards my house where my kids play in my well. The other thing is, my other concern really is my well. Our water is so terrible. I don't know what tests they're using on because as far as I lived there for six years, nobody except the, the one water company that we use have tested our well. I have to replace my well every, my well pump every three years because we're pumping such sludge. So my question is, when we allow six more houses to come up and start tapping that water system and our wells run dry, does the town of Burwick have any plans on ever bringing us town water? Probably not, right? No. And then lastly, my biggest concern is that we've received zero notification about this meeting, about the walkthrough. I literally found out through the Burwick Facebook page by one of your planning board members telling me and other community members, if we're gonna come to these meetings, we need to keep our mouth shut. Not telling us, not sending us notification, that's illegal, I'm pretty sure. And going on Facebook or as a real estate agent and telling community members if they're gonna come to these meetings to keep their mouth shut, that's wrong. So I don't know if anybody has any answers for my question about the arsenic headed towards my property during the rain during the building of this development? And I also don't know if you guys have any proposed plans on bringing us water when our wells run dry? Like this, this year was the worst drought that we've probably ever seen. That property that's behind my house was never mowed. It was the biggest fire hazard. Like everybody lights fireworks off every time a firework went off. We're out there filling buckets of water. 'Cause what are you gonna do? So does anybody have any answers for me whatsoever?
Hi, I'm Allison. Hi, I made it home. So.
And just like that, she's gone.
Okay. Go ahead, Phil, while we wait for Allison.
Okay. All right. Thanks for coming in this evening and, and we've heard your concerns. I, I know we have asked some specific questions about the arsenic previously and, and they do have studies for that.
I've contacted about, I'd say, a dozen DEP officers from Augusta all the way down here. We've talked to toxicologists. I've talked to the Department of Health and Human Services. All these people I spoke to have said that there's great concern here. They said that they're not really sure on who you, like they said it might be the zoning officer that we need to talk to. Nobody's really sure. And the toxicologist said, well, this is what you need to do, sir. We got, we're gonna take some samples of your property and then we'll wait till after the project's done. We're gonna take some more samples. And then if there's any problems, you could take them to court. Well, you know, the problem is that I don't want to have the problem in the first place. I don't want where my, like, there's a lot of kids that live abutted to this area. And so when we start unearthing toxic amounts of ar- I mean, look at the paperwork. You have it. The, the arsenic levels are through the roof. You, what, that's gonna be bad. And the, and another concern is when I bought my property, even my neighbor Ralph, the, the newest house that was just built there, nobody's telling him about this arsenic. I found out when I came to pay my taxes that I got like a little bit of a tax break because of the arsenic. And then my neighbor came up to me and he was like, hey, man, I noticed you planted a really big vegetable garden. And I was like, yeah, I did. I have potatoes, carrots, onions. He's like, wow, you can't eat any of that 'cause it's toxic. You can only eat things that are grown above the land when it comes to this kind of toxic level of arsenic that's in the ground. People aren't talking about it. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that, sorry, I lost connection. I live downtown, so I fully sympathize with your comments about the water. I have kids too and I know, you know, different chemicals in our land. It's always gonna be something that we need to be combating at a higher level than the town planning board. So what it really comes down to is per the current land use ordinance, this private land owner has the right to establish this development. I support you 100% in what you're saying about the arsenic. And I think that's absolutely terrible that the realtors that are selling these parcels to you possibly didn't do their due diligence that they're required to do by law and tell you about the arsenic that was in your land. So legal action, of course, could be taken from whoever stole your property if they were aware of the arsenic. But you hit on a couple of different topics that I just wanted to address and hopefully come to an understanding on. So the first is the chair expressing that you need to keep your mouth shut on Facebook. So obviously we wanna keep anything, you know, personal, she's obviously not here to defend herself, you know, aside. We don't know the exact circumstances of that conversation or what happened, but what I can tell you is like you're doing right now, you're always welcome to come to public hearings and we would love to hear what you have to say.
But I also think it's a.
So we could have a solution, but we do love to hear what you have to say and we encourage everyone to attend. Secondly, I want to just address the notice that you had to come here. So what we do at the town level is we go by law for public notices. Once findings of fact are, you know, completed and applications are complete for projects like this, the abutters are notified.
But none of us were. One person was notified, like I, that, like, dude, I don't even see one of my neighbors here.
But the application hasn't been filed yet for public care, but we had a next meeting. You'll be notified.
So weren't we supposed to be notified for the walkthrough? Exactly.
Your wife was there with us.
Yes, because you were in my backyard. We know, we obviously knew what was going on and we are actually, and actually, no, what I actually said was, is that we were notified, but only via the Burwick Facebook page. We're supposed to receive a letter in the mail, not have to go on Facebook and then be like harassed and bullied by a real estate agent that happens to be a planning board. Like that's just, it's all, whatever it is, it's, it's not right. There's not, we're not, you don't need to go around and round with it. You've heard what I've said. I'm, I believe by law, I'm supposed to receive a piece of letter in the mail like the rest of my neighbors and we haven't received any.
But that would occur after the application complete because we don't want to make people concerned about something that may not fall under our current land use ordinance. So say somebody submits an application. I live downtown. Say I want to have a farm of cows in my backyard. So I go to the town hall and I pay my fee and I submit my complete application and we as a planning board inform you that per the current land use ordinance, which is democratically voted on by our town, I am not allowed to have a farm of cows downtown. So we're not gonna go and tell all of my neighbors that I wanted to have a farm of cows downtown because I can't put it there regardless. So once the application is complete, which is what we're working on now with this project, that is when we would move on, 'cause that's our job as the planning board.
Okay, so we're not supposed to be notified for the walkthrough? It doesn't even matter. This, this isn't even, you guys have all heard what I said.
So we, at the planning board meetings, if you watch them on TV, the last planning board meeting or possibly the one before that was when we actually planned the lots, which is open to the public.
Can I have my concerns about the arsenic and the running out of water addressed?
Maddie, go ahead, Phil.
I would love to hear what the town's plan is for the water. That's also about the planning board. That would be something that would need to be voted on by.
Talking about two different water sources. She's talking about public water, you're talking about private wells. You guys are not talking about this.
Well, I'm talking about when our wells run dry. Does the town of Burwick have any plans to bring us?
Could I have an opportunity to address your concerns, sir?
Yes.
I, I really appreciate you coming before the town board and, and bringing these important issues to light. It's my understanding, having reviewed the plan, that the developer and, and the landowner himself who's choosing to live on that land, he's purchased that land legally, he is electing to live there himself and drink off the well water that he's putting, that he's putting in. So he's, he's got a lot of skin in the game and he is legally within his right to develop the land that he has bought.
Oh, yeah, and I agree with you.
Okay, may, may I finish, sir?
Yep.
Okay. So the, the study that they have given us about the arsenic, based on the construction methods, based on the way they're drilling the well, based on everything, it, it meets current DEP and state and federal requirements. So as far as the board is concerned, that, that passes muster. I, I empathize with you, sir, and I, I empathize with your position. I, you know, I wouldn't wanna live next to, to a place that had arsenic, but I, I would say this gentleman has bought the land and is willing to, i- if you consider it a hazard, hazard himself and hazard his family. That tells me that he's done his research adequately. I, I wouldn't go raise my kids somewhere where it's gonna be an issue that, that would harm my children. Additionally, I, I would encourage you to, to do a little research about how wells work. I, I empathize with you. My well ran dry, I live in Burwick last year. I had to spend tens of thousands of dollars to drill a new well. And the aquifers and the way the aquifers work, the, none of those houses are gonna be on the same aquifer necessarily. Some of them are gonna get pounded down deeper, some of them are shallower, some of them are gonna have to hydrofrack. There are different tables of water. So it, it's a little naive to assume, and I'm not, I mean you no insult, but it's naive to assume that they haven't done their due diligence when they have and they have provided the documentation to the town. And I, I empathize with your position. The other issue that I would like to address this evening, and, and you brought it up and I appreciate you coming and bringing that important topic up, is the use of social media. I really believe that social media can be used as a positive tool and I believe it can be used to a detriment. We have people that are, that are dedicated volunteers in this town and they've put a lot of time into putting a lot of information out through their own doing. The flip side of that is you, you can use social media to your own detriment and I'm not gonna make that call. That's not for me to, for me to say. The problem with social media is it gives everybody a voice, alright? Anybody can go on there and expouse an opinion, whether it's based in fact, whether it's, it's garbage or whatever. But what it comes down to is, is if you can't handle the heat, get out of the kitchen. And unfortunately, we've had, we've had folks in the community, rather than come in here and be part of the process of this town, have decided to, you know, it be insightful on social media. And I read it, I think it's comical, honestly, but I'm not gonna engage. I find that I'm above that. I have reached out to the town manager and I've asked him, because we don't currently have a social media policy. That's part of the problem. If you go on social media and you blind, you blur the lines between your personal life, your business and your role as a member of the town, that could be perceived as problematic. That's not my call to make. I'm a volunteer. That is the town's decision to make, whether it be the town manager, whether it be the town attorney, to, to ascertain what is appropriate and what is inappropriate. A lot of stuff's been said on social media and I, I don't buy into it, but if you think something is being done inappropriate, if you think that somebody on this board is doing something that's inappropriate and gives them a distinct business advantage, you should one, file a formal complaint with the town so it's appropriately investigated, two, lawyer up if, if that's the route you wanna go, or go to the real estate board and say, I think this is a conflict of interest. But all this nonsense and, and for the people watching from home to go online, you know, freedom of speech. I, I served my country for 24 years to fight for your freedom of speech and I, and I encourage you to do so. But the mudslinging and all the nonsense, just cut it out. Let's all be adults. Let's all come to the table, talk like adults and, and do things for the town. That's why I'm here. I want this town to be better. And I, and I empathize with you, sir. At the end of the day, the, the gentleman has, has purchased the land, he's going through the appropriate channels to develop his land and I, I hear you. And if you disagree with the scientific study that was done on his own land that he intends to live on and drink the well water, if you feel that incensed and that passionate about it, get another study to, to conflict that one.
Yeah, you know, I agree with you.
'Cause otherwise it's an opinion and I, and I respect your opinion.
Everybody has the, to write to, if you got the land, it's like Monopoly, you have the right to build it up. I'm not against that at all. I just think what happens is when, it's not right when somebody has something and they're going to develop it and that could hurt somebody else's. I have yet to hear any answers to the question that I asked about the arsenic being unearthed and what happens when it rains, when they're digging up these foundations or these basements. Will the land be, when the, when the earth is dug up to put these basements in is? Will the land be, when the earth is dug up to put these basements in, is it removed from the property at the time and then brought back later? Or do they just leave it sit there and then every time it rains, it just gets pushed towards my property?
So, I believe when you originally came for your permitting, we asked those very questions. And you did answer them to my satisfaction and to the rest of the board's satisfaction. And we did receive an environmental study that said that their construction methods and their plan to develop that area would not propose, would not, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the verbiage was, would not pose an immediate health issue to the people residing there or anyone around them. Am I, James, am I correct in that assumption? Do you have that paperwork?
I would be correct.
Okay, that is from the people that they hired to evaluate the hazard on the land that he is choosing to live on. To me, that says a lot because if I'm going to put my family at, I mean, think about, do you have children?
I do. I have two.
If you were going to develop a piece of land, would you knowingly develop a piece of land and drink the water from the ground that would poison your children?
I mean, I would have to say that he probably didn't know like the rest of us.
He just didn't-
Did you, did you know when you bought that land, what you were buying, or did you find out like the rest of us?
No, actually, to be honest, the first thing, the first time we found out is we came into the town hall for a preliminary, unformal meeting with Mr. Belissimo and he pulled out old paperwork.
Was it after you purchased it?
It was after I purchased the property.
So, that seems to be the nasty character that goes on with this piece of land.
At that point, I'm stuck in a rock and a hard place.
Just like I was, just like everybody was.
Paid a lot of cash for a lot of land. I was stuck in a situation. He brought forth the information to us. And immediately, I said, "What was my course of action? Am I going to get an attorney? Am I going to go talk to an attorney?" You know, it wasn't disclosed to me. You know, that's illegal. What do I do? And the attorney says, "Yes, you have a bulletproof case to go back and sue the person you bought the land from. It's going to take you years and years and years." And the attorney suggested that I look into the testing. With the help of my engineer, we researched multiple environmental companies. We didn't pick the cheapest one. We didn't pick the fastest one. This started in February, okay? And we went through all this stuff and I came up with another almost fifteen thousand dollars to get this testing agency to come up and talk to me. And I talked to all these professionals and all these engineers. And from the information that they gave me, I felt comfortable building a house for my family on this land. There's water filtration systems that will deal with if the arsenic is in the wells. The soil, as long as it's covered, it's not airborne, we're not running dirt bikes around the field and spitting dirt all over the place. Like, it's-
It's more like when you start to build and you, like, unearth these basements.
None of the soil leaves the property. You can move arsenic soil, dirt, all over the property. The only rule is that it can't leave your property. So, it'll all be, if there's a cut in the filth of the road, it'll go down the other side or encapsulated with the rock or loom and-
James, do you have a copy of that report that we had when they came with the initial?
I know, but they can-
Would you be willing to provide him a copy of the report? That way he can read it for himself?
Absolutely. We can, we'll give you a copy of the original and the response one as well. Ransom did the second one. So, Steve Height again. So, everything that Mr. Perotto had identified was exactly, word for word, the same issue that Mike had come up with when he found out that this was the issue. And that's why we went out to ransom and had this conversation. And they did a very extensive analysis of the property, which you guys have a full report of that as well, to answer all exactly those questions, exactly the questions that you just asked. How do you maintain and what you do? And each one, you have a lot development, individual lot development. You're maintaining your stormwater, you're maintaining your, everything you're supposed to do, you would do on this anyways. But being aware of the potential for with arsenic, in this case, the information that we have is this is a, it's residual here. It's not like it was brought here. This is what the land is.
From wood ash. It's from when the farmer tried fertilizing that farm.
It's interesting that you say that because that was the initial thought process as well. But when we went back through the analysis, they didn't find that. And so, and you're not wrong because I, you know, this is 25 years ago. They were using that as a method for disposing of wood ash and saying you could fertilize your land. As it turns out, this isn't one of them, even though it seems to be the common understanding that it was. But the information is from the analysis that this is not the land. So, I know that was the initial conversation that Jim had brought up when we first came to talk to him. We followed up with that. Mike would not be following through with the subdivision if he wasn't comfortable that everything he's done and what everything he can do is someplace that he can actually live with his family.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, you guys are developing the land, you're putting the lots in, you're putting the houses, you're digging the wells. When you go to pull your water test, because they are required to for CO on every single lot for every single house, just so you know, if those fail, whose responsibility is it to put in the water system, filtration system? Is it going to be the developer or is that a condition of the new homeowner because?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a yes or no answer, but most typically, it's the developer's responsibility to provide a potable water source.
Great.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say. He basically answered what I was going to say. I will most likely be building the houses and I will be getting the CO and will get the water tested.
Okay, yeah, because it won't pass, so you wouldn't be able to get a certificate of occupancy anyway. And I would hate to see a new buyer coming in, building a house. They're already in it for a lot anyway. And then have at the end of their building process to find out. My other question to you is, when you sell these lots, are you going to, well, you have to disclose, right, that there's arsenic?
Absolutely.
And you will be doing that going-
The last, the last thing that I want to do through this entire process is have the same thing happen to someone that happened to myself and Tim and the youngs who bought the other house over there.
Great.
It's not my intention, but anyways.
Good question. Most typically, if you build a house, it gets a CO. The CO has to have a potable water source. And if it requires that type, same type of, the-
Someone walked out the door.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Lee J, did you have anything?
I, well, I've been listening a lot. I was actually reading the ransom report again while you folks were talking. The only thing that I would think could still be of concern would be that as part of the erosion control plan or final, one of the final conditions of approval may be to have ransom prepare some sort of recommended controls to make sure that that soil does not leave the site of each one of those individual home lots. Because you know how it goes. When a contractor gets out on the site and they go on wild, they're not, one, they're not always reading the notes on the plans. And two, they're going to fill up a dump truck and if it means taking material off the site, they're just going to take it and dump it somewhere. And I think that there needs to be certain precautions made and made aware of that every single one of those sites needs to have some sort of protection granted that that material won't leave the site and remains in place during construction. So, I mean, I can think more about that. I can do some of my own research. I have done work with ransom before. I can talk with them further about this and see if there's certain conditions or thoughts that I can have for you for the final approval on encapsulating or making sure that that material does not leave the site during construction of each individual home lot, or for the road, of the road for that matter.
But that's easy.
And just as an aside, I completely sympathize with the gentleman of speaking as well. I'm not going to tell you where I live, although you can probably Google my name and find out real quick. But I live in a community that has a public water supply and it's one of the higher PFAS counts in the state. I keep pulling spring in business, I'll tell you, because I will not drink the water from my faucet. Very point blank. Pulling spring gets on my business because of that very issue. So, I completely understand where he's coming from and his concerns. I live with it too and I'm in a brand new house and a brand new development. So, anyway.
Okay. Anything else? Paul, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I do have one comment because there was a comment about not being able to speak and, you know, get your point across and that sort of thing. And I think we put that to rest tonight. Also, as we're putting that to rest, I also want to know, as Bill said, we're all volunteers here. We take this in our own time because we care about this community. We want to do the absolute right thing, but we're constrained by the requirements that are put in place. We have to go by the requirements. If the requirements aren't met, there's no choice. We have to approve. So, we're going to ask the questions as I'm sure you saw tonight. We ask tough questions and we want, and we want answers. But the other thing that I think is important to note here is that, you know, the opportunity to speak. There are public hearings. If you can look at our agenda, it's online. There was a public hearing. This was not a public hearing on this site tonight. But we heard the comments anyway. That was because it was, it was a sore wound. We heard it. But typically, if there is someone who wants to make a public comment about something that's still in review and not ready for a public comment, we don't hear it. Those are the rules. We have to go by our rules. So, you know, we all feel very strongly about the issues of homeowners. And we always want all of them addressed to as much satisfaction as possible for the homeowner. And yet, we're constrained by what the comprehensive plan says and what our position is. So, that's about all I got to say.
I think it's just important to add, Paul, that that comprehensive plan is voted on by the town. So, that's where you ultimately have, like, your ultimate voice heard. Make sure you're going to every town election.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
Yeah, anytime that somebody has a concern too, and I want you to know that, we're open. Come talk to us, call us. We'd be glad to. I'm the voting force master. I would love to talk all day long about this with you. Just come in, call me, and we can have a conversation. Don't feel like this is your only platform. It's not. We're open Monday through Thursday. I'm into the phone Fridays and Saturdays sometimes. So, call me if you have a concern and we can talk about it.
And to back that up, just, if you have a concern about something that's going on on the town, come and talk to these folks. That's what they're here for. That's what they get paid for. The nonsense that's going on on social media, it's out of hand. It really is. And I, there are opinions out there that are being espoused by people that are, they're valid opinions. But you know what? You can be an armchair keyboard ninja, sit at home and throw flame at people. And you know what? Some of those opinions, I'm like, hey, man, that guy's got a point. Come before the board. Get your point heard. Being a social justice warrior on the internet is not going to get you anywhere.
Okay. Anything else?
The platform is the planning board, but it's also the select board. They can hear you. They kind of have more say, just what you want.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
Where do we stand on this, James?
I think at this point, it would be preliminary approval and we can set the public hearing on a slightly different note. We may or may not meet on the 16th, so the next hearing opportunity would be December 2nd. Does that work?
James, would that be a conditional with the caveat of the recovery of anything that's excavated? I know that was brought up this evening, but does that need to be added as a condition or should it be?
I think it could be noted as a point of interest in terms of final conditions of approval. This is just preliminary approval.
Understood.
You could add more at the final. No, it's fine. No, fine.
Basically, to find the application complete, correct?
And to set the date of the public hearing.
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
I'll make the motion that we, that we find the application complete.
I will second.
Okay. Roll call, Paul?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes.
Amber? And Allison?
Yes.
And yes, from me. So, it's five oh for preliminary approval.
Yep.
And the date of your public hearing, Jim, were you suggesting it was going to be December 2nd?
Yep, December 2nd.
Do you have enough time? Do you have enough time to advertise?
No, we don't. Because of the holiday.
Right.
Because of the holiday and getting the information into the Sentinel, if on the 2nd they opt to do it.
Honestly, if you want to do it the first meeting in January.
That would be better, quite honestly, for timing and, you know, I could have a little bit of time to do some more research on the whole.
Yeah, we have no, you want to do it to the first meeting in January, that's fine. Then we can work with Lee, get some verbiage for lot construction from ransom. If that's necessary, we can do that too. That's not a big deal.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Eddie.
Okay.
It's going to be January 6th, right?
January 6th.
January 6th.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you want a copy of each of those here? Okay, we'll make a copy of those. We'll get those to them offline.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, Paul.
Moving on.
All right, thank you.
Next would be, open it up to any new business?
I know it's already been brought up, but should we develop a social media, social media policy for our volunteers and paid personnel? And I think just-
Staff has them. Staff has them.
We do have them.
Staff does.
Yeah, staff, and I'd have to take a look at it if it applies to boards. But I think what would be great to do is we can hold a joint meeting with the select board, planning board, Division of Burwick. Talk about social media, how we want to amplify our messages and what we want to message. And I'll get working on that. I'll take a look at the policy and see what applies to boards.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's good. Anything else for new business?
I do have-
Excuse me, sorry.
Yep.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I do have an application that came in and has gone through both with Jenny and I. We looked at it. It's for a conditional use, so I wanted to give you the information tonight and I will also email it to you on Monday for the December 2nd meeting. All righty, so that you can take a look at it at that meeting, that you'll have it in time to be able to take and review it. So, I have hard copies here for you.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have for the business.
Anybody else? New business? Paul? Allison? Lee J?
Nope.
Jen? Anybody?
If there's no further questions or comments from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Burwick Town Hall, I'd like to make a motion-
No, you need to do your second public comment.
Sorry.
Do second public comment first?
I was too eager.
That's all right.
Are you a patriot? Patriot, why?
Yeah.
I was like getting him on.
So, you want to open up the second public comment?
Open up the second public comment session. Is there nobody on line, right?
Nope.
Anything from here? Everybody's gone, so we'll close the public comment informational items?
I just have one. I guess it could have been.
Okay.
You guys should vote. If you, well, you can make this discussion if you want to meet December 16th in your bylaws. It's no. If you want to meet the 16th, then you would vote to meet on the 16th. But I would recommend to take the day off, so.
That's not our next meeting, right? The next meeting's the 2nd.
Yeah, that's it. It's the 16th.
I feel like you guys talked about it last meeting. Didn't they say they were going to?
No, just the thing and then a couple of things.
But you can also kick the can down the road and decide the 2nd as well, so.
Do we want to-
Decide on the 2nd when the board chairs here.
Okay. Just move it to the 2nd. We'll discuss it on the 2nd as to whether or not we meet the 16th. Okay, any other informational items? Jen? Lee J? Paul?
Paul said thank you.
Okay, now, Phil.
I already did it, so just move to adjourn.
Okay.